With seven out of nine board members present, I will call this meeting to order. Ms. Owen has the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
Please face the flag. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Hill and Ms. Horn are out of town. So, we have a couple of announcements. The first, on behalf of the Board, I want to extend best wishes to all of our students, staff, and families who are enjoying a well-deserved fall break this week. We are happy to have that back in our Knox County calendar, and we look forward to have everyone back at school next Monday. Second announcement, several board members will be attending the Tennessee School Boards Association Leadership Conference, an annual convention, November 2nd through the 5th in Nashville. And as board members, we look forward to spending time and sharing information with other board members from across the state. Are there any elected officials here? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to changes to the agenda. First, we'll look at, is there any changes to the work session agenda first? Okay, then do I have a motion to approve?
I may.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next will be any, if there's any requested corrections or changes to the regular session agenda for Wednesday night. Okay, Superintendent Thomas?
Yes, Madam Chair, we would like to withdraw the item regarding the 403B plan.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Cotten just informed us that that's item 12B, she believes, so we have, that that would like to be withdrawn. Do I have a motion?
I may.
Second.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion regarding this? All in favor of removing item 12, whatever that was, 12, about the 403B plan, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries that item will be voted on to be removed on Wednesday night. Okay, I think that's back to you Superintendent Thomas for your report. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hugh.
So, do we have to, we don't approve Wednesday's agenda now, he just withdrew that, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Have some brief updates for you this evening. The coupon book campaign officially ended on September 27, and that means that the completion of the sale of books at schools. Books are still available for purchase from Central Office and can be purchased soon at some of our retail partners. Knox County Schools has hosted two of four opiate abuse prevention community meetings, one of those at Bearden High School, the other at Southole High School. Both meetings had large crowds, and feedback from those meetings has been incredibly positive. We're seeing many requests to get information about the dangers of drug addiction into the hands of students as early as 5th grade, and to talk more with our students about consequences of drug use. There are still two more meetings that will be held. The next meeting will be at Fulton High School, Wednesday, October 25th, at 6:00. And the following night, Thursday night, October 26th, at Hall's High School, at 6:00. Hike for Schools is coming up on October 28th. It's a three-mile round trip hike that's open to all abilities. It's from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Third Creek Greenway. Registration is $10, and the $10 will get you a tee-shirt, and also $5 goes back to the school. The event is untimed, it's not a race, and food trucks will be on-site. Participating food trucks will donate 10% of proceeds to Knox County Schools as well. Pre-registration is open until October 17. The Dogwood Elementary rezoning meeting is coming up on Tuesday, October 17, at 6:00 p.m., and it will be in the gymnasium. National School Bus Safety Week is October 16 through 20. The theme is hashtag Stop On Red to promote stopping when the school bus stop sign is extended from the bus. Transportation is working with Public Affairs to distribute posters to all schools, one for elementary and one for middle and high, with appropriate bus safety tips. Principals will incorporate these safety tips into morning announcements. Apprentice Elliott from KCSTV is making a PSA to be shown to students that will also hopefully air on local news sites and KCSTV. We will also do the first School Bus Driver Awards that week. Thank-A-Teacher Week is immediately following, from October 23rd to 27th. The week will kick off with the Teacher's Supply Depot opening on Saturday, October 21st. Reach Them To Teach Them will occur on Tuesday of that week at the Tennessee Theater, and a viewing of Mr. Holland's Opus will happen at Regal Cinemas on Saturday, October 28. In our partnership with Great Schools, we're entering into our fourth cohort of teacherpreneur grants this year. The idea behind the grant is for teachers to submit an idea for an innovative approach to instruction in the classroom. All Knox County teachers will have the opportunity to submit proposals. The deadline for application is October 18. Our Magnet Showcase is scheduled for Thursday, October 26. This event will be at Market Square from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And finally, congratulations to both Missy Massey and Shannon Jackson, two of our Central Office administrators, the outstanding collaborator from the Department of Therapy and Practice in Teacher Education at UT. So, Missy and Shannon, congratulations, and we're really proud of you. So, by the way, neither of those two told me anything about it, so that's how modest they are. So, congratulations. And Madam Chair, that, and members of the Board concludes my report.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions for the Superintendent about his report? Okay, seeing none. It has been brought to my attention that because item 12B, to approve the freeze of current 403B plan, is, was, there was a motion made to remove that from the agenda, that any member that, or any person that has signed up to speak to that item, that would like to withdraw their name, since that item will be voted on to be withdrawn on Wednesday, can come up at this time and remove their name if they want to. If not, then you'll be allowed to speak at the end, but we have a very long meeting, and we just wanted to make sure that if you wanted to, you had an opportunity. So, if you'll just come up here. Uh-huh. Seeing Ms. Roundtree. Okay, thank you. We will move into the discussion of the October 11 regular session agenda, and if you will, board members, if you will note that on that, the first item five and, I'm sorry, item five and six are special recognitions. Item seven is approved appointment of the Board of Education Committee in rows for 2017 and 2018. So, it's that time for committee selection. But first, I would just like to say thank you for each of you have done an outstanding job of serving on your committees, your respective committees this year. So, unless someone desires to be reassigned or serve in a different capacity, the recommendation to be voted on will be to, for the board committees to remain the same for the coming year. However, if you want to serve in a different capacity, let Ms. Cotten know tomorrow. So, any discussion, and I see Ms. Owen has her light on.
I'd just like to make a suggestion. We've had discussion back and forth about this in the past, but I would like to suggest that we have a more official representative for the Disparities in Educational Outcomes Steering Committee.
Okay.
So that that person can be there all the time. And I think Ms. Dethridge had expressed some interest in that, so I'd be happy to pass that. I'm saying it.
I tell you what, Ms. Dethridge, if you have some interest in that, you let Ms. Cotten know tomorrow, and so with the Board's approval, we could add that and then vote on that. But just, if any of you, in fact, want to serve on that committee, which is a very important but very difficult committee to work on, then feel free to let Ms. Cotten know. And those who looked for a change to your agenda on Wednesday before the meeting, if we, I'm Ms. Hugh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I am happy to serve on the Investment Committee again. This will be year number eight for me. However, since I am not seeking reelection, if someone else is dying to have this so they can get warmed up, I will not be, it will not hurt my feelings if somebody else wants to sit on the Investment Committee, although I am happy to do it again. I just want people to not think it was mine forever, and nobody could have it.
Okay. What perseverance, eight years, wow, okay. And I don't see anybody jumping at the chance, but they can let Ms.
I'm good to do it, I just really.
Okay, they can let Ms. Cotten know tomorrow, thank you, and we will do that. Okay, moving on. We will move into items and contracts, and the first two under items and contracts, item C, one and two, is there any discussion? Okay, then items, I'm sorry.
Actually, sorry.
Ms. Owen?
Looking at the textbook compliance report, do I understand correctly that all of those are compliant? Is that what that report says?
Shannon, thank you.
That is signing off from our school, saying that we are in compliance in all of our buildings.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Owen. Your light's still on, did you have, okay, that's fine. Then item number three and four, Mike, were you on about that, or item three or four?
About item two.
Okay.
Just a quick question. Is there a limit to the number of people that we can send to the Governor's Academy for School Leadership? Is that, or is there a nomination process, and then they pick a designated number, or does anybody know?
Ms. Jackson, are you able to, I'm sorry, Dr. Davis, I did not see you there.
No, there's not a limit. Typically, we, the Superintendent typically nominates three to four assistant principals a year for that, for that particular academy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Items three and four. Ms. Owen?
I have a question about the capacity of the two teaching assistants. Will they be teaching the classes under the supervision of a certified teacher? That's the impression I got from the way it was worded. Or are they there to support one certified teacher?
Okay, Ms. Massey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We provide a full-time teacher for general education and a part-time special education teacher to meet students' IEP goals, so they will operate under those, that supervision of those folks.
Does that mean they will be teaching the classes, or they will be assisting those teachers teaching those classes?
So, they will work in the capacity of assisting those teachers, but they may run some small groups with some instructional materials that they would receive training on. You're welcome.
Okay, seeing no other lights on for items three and four, we'll move to items five and item six, and this is a lease agreement and a permanent easement. Ms. Owen?
On the lease agreement, is there somewhere else that we could park all of those vehicles that we actually own, so we wouldn't have to pay this lease every year?
Okay, Ms. Rhodes?
No, ma'am, not really. That'll provide us the kind of space we need. We've had between 75 and 100 trucks there regularly, and then it's also used for parking for privately-owned vehicles for our maintenance staff. It's about three acres, plus we're also getting a block storage building with that that's between 1,000 and 2,000 square feet.
Thank you.
Ms. Owen, I will tell you that I was over there a couple of weeks ago, was meeting with Mr. French, and it is a very needed piece of property for what we need it for, so. Okay, no other lights on for five and six, we'll move to seven and eight, and both of these relate to junior achievement. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to nine, 10, and 11, which is two Scholastic book fairs and a winter formal. Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just didn't know, I know approving the book fairs is new, and as the resident librarian, I'm getting lots of questions about that process. So, is there anything that we're looking at to sort of streamline that? I don't know who can answer that question, Shannon, Russ, whomever.
We are looking at doing a one-time contract that would be a blanket for our principals to sign, but that's not in place at this time. And so, we're having to work with Scholastic to get that done, but we didn't want to hold up these book fairs.
Sure, I understand. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other lights, we'll look at items 12, 13, and 14, and these all relate to Carter Middle School, I believe. Is there any discussion? Okay, items 15 and 16 relating to Central High School, any discussion? Items 17, 18, and 19 all relate to LNN. Is there any, STEM, is there any discussion on those items? Items 20 and 21 relate to Powell High School, any discussion? Items 22 through 25 relate to Powell Middle School, any discussion on those? Okay. Items, let's see, 20, just skip on 22 through 25, no, items 26 through 27, Southole High School, and Vine Middle School. Any discussion on those items? Okay, well, if not, then we'll move into board policies. Policies A, B, and C, under nine, A, B, and C, any discussion? Policies D, E, and F, any discussion on those three? G, H, and I, any discussion? Okay, J, K, and L? Okay, item M, any discussion? Ms. Owen?
Board members, I believe Terry emailed to you two pieces of paper that I'd like to look at as possibly an amendment to the, to the red line copy is what I'm trying to say. What it does is takes the language that we have said that we believe is under sex and just lay it out and define that. So, I think that's a sort of a compromise that allows people to see our intent while still changing the language the way we have looked at changing it. So, if we do that as an amendment Wednesday, and that would allow us to vote differently on each one, so if we voted for the amendment and then voted against changing the language, then the amendment would just die with the motion. Or if we voted for the amendment and then voted for changing the language, then the amendment would go onto the policy. So, that would just allow the definition to be there so that it would be clear what we're talking about. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hugh.
Ms. Benz, I was just going to ask if Ms. Owen might read that language, because people in the audience don't know what that is unless they've had a chance to.
Thank you.
Certainly, I'm sorry. It is the definition of sex. It says that sex includes anything related to sex, gender, sexual orientation, or perception of such as interpreted by the EEOC, and in quotation marks from the EEOC. As the Federal Law Enforcement Agency charged with interpreting and enforcing Title VII, EEOC has concluded that harassment and other discrimination because of sexual orientation is prohibited sex discrimination.
Okay, Ms. Hugh.
Thank you. I just would like to ask a question of the law director, does he have any problem with this? Because I understand the original recommendation to change the policy came from the law director's office, so I'd like to know if this amendment would meet with approval on Wednesday.
It's law department's position that the way this is written is not a protected class under Title VII, nor is it protected under the Code of Federal Regulations, which are promulgated to tell the EEOC what they need to do or can do. The EEOC, which policy can change at the whim of the administration of the government, could well change tomorrow, don't know. But their policy must be guided by law, by the statute, and by the Code of Federal Regulations, and clearly under the United States Code and under the CFR, Code of Federal Regulations, the definition given here is not a quote "protected class." So, that is mine, and they are not the Federal Law Enforcement Agency charged with interpreting and enforcing Title VII. They are an agency that complaints can be taken to. They then, if they deem that there's a proper case, turn it over to the Department of Justice, who is the enforcement agency that carries out any lawsuits. So, I think it's not quite consistent with my understanding of the law. I make no comment about policy. This Board can adopt whatever policy it wants. I'm not making any statement there, other than that's my interpretation of the law.
Did you have a follow-up, Ms. Hugh? Yes. So, the only way we can guarantee that those students or faculty or whatever in the other policy are, we can add to what we will not tolerate as harassment. I mean, I'm asking that, I understand the legal definition, but my thought is if our legal, if our policy just says we obey the law, then do we even need a policy? Because of course we have to obey the law. But, you know, I think our school's intent is that no one who enters a Knox County school feels subject to harassment or discrimination, period. Whether you're the kid with braces, whether you're the kid with freckles and, or overweight, or any of those kind of things, so I cannot go to the policy review committees. So, I will ask now, I can't, I couldn't attend those meetings, can we not have a policy that just says we don't tolerate harassment or discrimination of any kind, period? Understanding that we must follow the law.
Mr. Buick? We did address that at policy review, but I'll let you go ahead and.
I think so, although I wasn't policy review. The way I read the policy, G220 and its, which is harassment of employees and J210 harassment of students, it says any harassment, any harassment. Now, with regard to harassment of employees, you would hope that your teachers, most of whom have master's degrees or educated people, are not going to be harassing other employees because of whatever position in life they have, whether it's a sexual preference, or whether, as you point out, whether it's braces, or overweight, or some birth defect or something, you're right, that should not. You're right, that should not be tolerated under any circumstances. But, the way the policy is set out, as I read it from the policy committee, it says any harassment can lead to firing and disciplinary action against an employee. There's another problem I see with this. There's a doctrine in law that the Latin is expresio unius est exclusio alterius. And that is, I think, Ms. Fugit, part of the problem of when you start itemizing those people that are protected for a particular reason, that policy, what I just gave you, is a policy in law that says if you itemize certain items, then all other items are excluded. So, what I'm saying is if you have a broad thing that the policy committee came out with that said no harassment, period, end of story, no harassment of any kind to anybody, you've covered the waterfront. If you start itemizing, then you've got people that may have had birth defects or braces or something else, and you know as well as I do, especially at the middle school level out on the playground, it can be very, very brutal. And I know, I went through it, I understand that.
I did too. So, my, so that's my question. If we, and again, I'm just, I hate to put you on the spot, but if we did, does not tolerate harassment for any reason, period, why do we have to say including but not limited to harassment based on all the things that make up the legal definition?
You don't need all of that. All you've got to say is no harassment of any kind, and I think you've covered it. I think that in and of itself is something that subjects anybody to any harassment to disciplinary action by the superintendent and this board.
Thank you, then I will be doing a substitute motion on Wednesday.
I think next was Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the law director just answered my question, but, which was basically going to be, is this not, the suggestions that Ms. Owen's made aside, the original offering from the law department was all encompassing because it did not single out or enumerate different classes. Is that correct?
That's correct. And although I wouldn't, I have to say, I was not at those meetings, but the way I read it, that is correct.
Okay. Would this not also apply to two-ten as well?
Yes, they pretty much mirror each other with regard to harassment.
So, if, it would, both of them would be covered as, it would cover any individuals, no matter, as long as they were members of the, theoretically of the human race, it would cover the entire race, as long as we didn't start singling out and enumerating different ones.
I do have a problem with that listing excluding by definition under law by excluding other people, as Ms. Fugit said, you know, people with braces or fat, or she and I both be applied across the board to every student.
I agree. I guess the only other question I would have is, I guess, based on what you said, though, I know you said that you didn't necessarily recommend policy or changes. Do you not feel like it's the position of the law department is still to go with your all's original recommendation of just making the minor changes from standpoint of words?
Again, the law department doesn't want to enter into telling this board what to do on policy. It can do what it wants. All we can do is recommend, as we have, suggestions and why, under the law and what I've expressed here, this policy that came out of the, originally came out of the policy committee. But I don't want anybody to understand that I am telling this board what policy they can or should make.
I understand that, but I guess what I'm saying is, the law department has, no matter how much discussion we've had at the various meetings and committee meetings and whatnot, the law department still stands by its original recommendation.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I just wanted to clarify a couple, couple different things, and thank you, Jennifer, for trying to come up with an alternative to, yeah, make everybody happy, and you, Ms. Fugit, as well. This is just, I guess it depends on what amendments folks make on Wednesday, but I do think we just grammatically need to make sure we have consistency. So, if we're going to either capital F for federal law or have that lowercase, if we could just have that consistent. And then, I guess my other question was, is, I guess there would be, is there a procedure that is tied to this that then we need to change? And I did want to just clarify, Ms. Fugit, you mentioned on Wednesday that you plan to introduce an amendment that would just read, does...
No.
A substitute motion, I'm sorry. Does not tolerate harassment for any reason, period?
Period.
Okay.
Not doing the included.
Yeah. And then it would just pick back up where it says harassment by any...
Right.
Yeah, and it would pick back up there, so. And I think, I hope everyone knows this, but I feel strongly that I just need to go on the record that as a board member, you know, my intent is not for any student or employee to suffer harassment in any situation, and I can't imagine that that would be the intent of any of my colleagues on this board. So, you know, I appreciate that we have some different options that are being put out before us, but I also want to add that this is only the first reading of the policy. So, depending on what happens on Wednesday, it is going to be coming back before us again the following month, and, you know, I just hope that there are folks out there that know our heart is for doing what is right and supporting our kids and our staff, and I just want that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roundtree. Ms. Owen?
I just want to clarify, when we were talking about the original advice from the law department, we have previously been advised that only using language that says we will not tolerate any harassment is inadequate, and that we need to fully include all of the federally protected classes. I think all of us have at some point said that we would prefer to just say that harassment is unacceptable and won't be tolerated at all. So, I think we need some clarification about whether we have, whether we need that federal language or not, because that's the point that, that's the sticking point right there that has been a problem all along, is that we have been told we need to have that federal language. And I'd like to go on and say that a master's degree is not a valid measure of who may or may not be a harasser. That one would hope school employees would not harass each other is not enough. And I say that as a harassed school employee. And at that time, our language was, it was a long time ago, and our language was too specific, and it only covered sexual harassment, and my harassment was not sexual harassment. So, I had no recourse at that time. Under our current policy, I would be very covered. And under the policy that Ms. Fugit is talking about, I would be very covered. But I think it is very, I think it is very limiting to assume that just because of one's station or one's degree or one's position, that that would preclude them from being a harasser. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fugit.
Thank you. I would just follow up, I will, I will, Mr. Buke May, I call you in the morning, and let's talk about some, helping me draft something that would be legal.
Certainly, and I, and if I might, Madam Chairman, I agree that the protected classes in there are covered under law anyway. If you have a harassing work environment because of your sex, you have an action under law anyway, and, but what...
Thank you. I mean, that was sort of my, that was sort of my point about, we have to follow the law.
Correct.
We can be, we can say we won't tolerate any harassment.
Correct, and that's, well, I'm not going to give you my preference, but I already said what it could do.
Right, right, thank you. I'll call you in the morning.
Thank you. Ms. Dethridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I agree. I'm glad you guys have wanted to get together and figure out how to best word this, because my issue or my concern is, if we're going to discuss and list protected class, then that's fine, but when you pull, as he stated, when you start identifying one over the other, then you need to do all, which means then you have to identify what you mean by race, national origin, everything, because now you got it where you got biracial kids, you've got, those is called others, you've got kids that identify different ways, and they're harassed too. And as she said, I mean, I've been there, I've been harassed, I've been discriminated against, all that as a student. So, I understand what you're saying, so when you start identifying those that are more so than others, then you get into a sticky situation. So, I'm going to let you guys work it out and bring us something back.
Yes, Mr. Buke, as chairman, would you get with the law department and you, after you meet with Ms. Fugit, and kind of come from amongst you all and come up with something that we, and send it out to the board, maybe?
Ms. Fugit and I'll get together whenever her convenience tomorrow morning, and I've got all day to work with her and get something to the board.
And just let the rest of the board members know.
I think it's a small break.
Yeah, okay. And thank you for being here tonight. Okay, thank you, we're moving. Okay, Ms. Roundtree, before we move on to...
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess, if Ms. Fugit can ask us, or you and Mr. Buke can discuss it, would it be possible for us to have it written as harassment for any reason, and then a parentheses about the federally identified protected area? I don't know if that would be a way to sort of then cover all of those things, I don't know, I was just throwing that out instead of listing it out.
Well, I'm going to rely, well, I'm going to rely on the law director. My point is, we have to follow the law. Whether we say we're going to follow the law and policy doesn't, it seems kind of redundant to me. We don't need a policy if all we're going to say is we're going to follow the law. That was my only thought about that, but I will, he's got the law degree, not me, so we'll talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just practiced a little.
Item, item number N about the hearing officers, are there any, appointment of the hearing officers, any discussion? Questions for Mr. Buke? Okay, moving on, OMP, board policies listed as OMP, is there any discussion? Item Q, any discussion?
We'll work on that one, too.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just wondering, all of the proposed amendments that we discussed on the earlier one of harassment of employees, would those stay consistent across to the harassment of students?
Yeah, that's what we're going to work on.
Yes, yes.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item R, S, and T. Any discussion? Seeing no lights, we'll move into U, V, and W, any discussion on any of these three? Okay. Board policies listed under X, Y, and Z, any discussion? Okay, moving into double letters now, is there any discussion on A, A, B, B, or C, C? D, D, E, E, and F, F? G, G, H, H, and I, I? And H, H? No, sorry, any on those? Any discussion? Okay, then we are on 10A, under grants. Items A and B, any discussion? Items C and D, any discussion? Items E, F, and G, any discussion? Okay, that finishes, I believe, all the grants, so we're on 11 contracts. Is there any discussion on contracts under A or B? Seeing none, we'll move into 12, regular agenda items, item A. Any discussion? Ms. Fugit?
I just have a follow-up. I assume we found the money.
Madam Chair, Ms. Fugit, what we're recommending is that we do a designation from fund balance to cover the cost. The, there's still a couple of outstanding things, there were a couple of change orders, and then also, I know the contractors incurring some late charges because he's not been able to be paid yet. So, what we would request is for, up to $450,000, but it all be designated to spend on this project, and none would be spent in addition to what the cost is. In other words, if it came in at 410 or 405 or whatever, then that's what we would spend just to close out the project.
So, so as you and I had discussed earlier, this, this will just be, we'll take it out of fund balance. What we don't spend, we don't take out if it's, or, we will only take out as much as it requires to pay the contractor, and then hope that at the end of this year, we have some more money to put back into fund balance.
Right, we would hope to replace what is designated out of fund balance through any excess revenue that might come in this year, or expenditures that are under, under, or over projected, I guess, so that they would close into fund balance.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions. As I've stated previously, I think we're obligated to pay this because the, most of the work has been done, and to not do it would, would just make matters worse. But, I guess, and we all got the information, I think it was forty-seven pages there on Friday afternoon. To be honest, I didn't look at it with it coming that late. I, you know, if we're going to get information, and you want the board to look at it, it really should be made available a little bit sooner and not, not just give us the weekend, because I was, you know, have other things to do on the weekend, or most of us have other things to do on the weekend and stuff. But, having said that, I know there's an investigation continuing and everything, but have you, have you been able to identify at this point individuals that were responsible for why it did not get to the board? And I'm certainly not holding you responsible, Mr. Thomas, because you inherited this matter.
Superintendent Thomas, do you want to answer that or defer to the, what you sent out? I mean, that's a very complex thing, what do, or, do you want to go ahead and answer, Mr. McMillan?
Yes, ma'am, I'll, I'll respond. And, yes, we have a pretty good idea in terms of all, well, we do know who all the individuals are that were involved, and I appreciate you saying not holding me responsible, but I am responsible as well as the individuals that are, because there was an opportunity to, even though the project started in, best we can determine, February 2016, goes back a ways, but, you know, as best we were able to determine, too, that a decision could have been made in June before all this work had done, been done to actually stop this and say timeout, pause, where's the budget, where's the board approval, that sort of thing. So, I certainly take responsibility. I've been around long enough to know, at that point, I should have asked those questions. But, yes, there were some other folks who, who at different points in this project could have, could have... at different points in this project, could have, could have said, hey, wait a minute, timeout again, let's look at this, so um, you know, the, the big thing I think that went wrong with it was obviously the CTE Department took responsibility for the management and construction, that should have never happened. I think that had been to a certain extent a practice. Uh, I think there have been other projects, probably not to the magnitude of this one where that, that had happened, but you know, we went through a physical plan upgrade audit a few years ago, I think maybe 2014, when we, we, part of the recommendation there was to develop a capital asset management policy, which we did, and that policy clearly states what, what is capital and what needs to be approved by the Board. Uh, there were probably about six policies violated throughout this process, and I think there were several missed opportunities where it could have been righted and, you know, and me, me being one of those. But I know there were meetings involving certain people from certain departments that uh, um, maybe had we done a better job training uh, with the capital asset management policy and purchasing, maybe that wouldn't have happened, but that's no excuse for it happening, so uh, um, certainly there will be follow-up with the, with the individuals, including myself, that involved in this project. I mean, how you say you have a conversation with yourself, well, again, I um, uh, I had the opportunity um, to, to stop it in early June, but there were some things that uh, that happened there that didn't get stopped and, and, but there were other points along the way up until that, so I guess the, the simple answer to your question, yes, we, we know, know the individuals from their departments that uh, that are represented here, and uh, obviously that's something we are gonna correct, we're not gonna tolerate, um, you know, and I, we'll be, as we finish up, I know the investigation is kind of ongoing, and that's, what you got was a preliminary summary report, so that we expect there's to be more uh, in terms of trying to really pinpoint some of the other things that happened, but I know we, I, I knew the Board was not gonna approve the item unless there was um, an explanation as to where the funds would come from, so uh, we, we tried to work, and I apologize for the, the late Friday evening um, uh, email too, so uh, I don't know if you have a further question?
Well, just, and, and, and I don't want to get specific at this point, but based on the information, and as you said, it's, it's still an ongoing investigation, but we have idea, or you have identified uh, that there was more than one individual that, that should have caught this.
There, there were multiple departments where things happened, that really somebody could have had the, or had the opportunity to, to step up, so there, there were gaps in communication, uh, you know, between the CTE Department, uh, the um, our CNI Department in terms of innovation, our Finance Department, our Facilities Department, and the Superintendent's Office, so uh, there, there were multiple opportunities for getting this right, and it didn't happen, and also there was some failure to provide adequate oversight and supervision uh, to the individual that was uh, that was managing this, this project, as well as some incomplete training and, and apparent lack of understanding of fiscal processes, so again, having gone through this one time a couple of few years ago, I did not expect or anticipate having to go through this again, but in the future, um, and we've talked about this as a staff, I mean, there will not be capital projects that, that this district will enter into without the Facilities Department and the Maintenance Department managing those projects from start to finish, and I think this is a good example of what can happen when, when it doesn't happen like it's supposed to happen, and, and so that.
Well, just, just as a follow-up, then based on what you're saying, at some point, some reasonable time in the future, can the Board e- expect you to hold these individuals accountable?
Uh, yes, sir, and, and again, I know the Board, I expect the Board to hold me accountable. That's uh, that's my job, when, when things
It's fair.
Go, go awry, that's uh, that's my fault, and um, and so I, I put myself in that category as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Etheridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just piggybacking on what Mike said, um, I understand, there was, there were several opportunities according to what was in the paper, I don't know what's going on except what I read, and we have a tendency to continue giving people opportunities one after the other. If things were what they were said in the paper, he shouldn't have been able to do that long before now, long before this, this situation, so it, he is correct. I think there is some oversight that needs to be tightened up, and when people don't do what they're supposed to do, and you call them on the carpet, do something about it then, because something like this could happen again if we don't take control of that situation. Now, that was not what I was gonna say, my question was gonna be, was gonna be, when we take this out to fund balance, I know there's a certain percent that you have to maintain in fund balance, would this pull us below that?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Etheridge. No, ma'am, it would not put us below the 3% amount, but we, and I know Gary could speak to it a little bit uh, in more detail than I can, but I think we're anticipating a little over $25 million roughly to, to be in fund balance when the books close.
Mr. Spencer?
That's, that's correct. Um, our target for fund balance, obviously with the MOU with the county, is to try to get it to $30 million. And this year, the books have been closed, but they're still being audited, and we're looking at probably contributing 4.7 million this year to get it up to 25 million. Uh, the 4.7 comes primarily from some very nice revenues that we saw in this past year, um, and this designation will be against that 25 million, and as, as the Superintendent said, we will search for dollars, we will search for pennies as we always do, to try to look for savings to make up for this $450,000 designation.
So you're saying that this will not take us below it, but it sounds like we're already below it.
No, the 30 million is based on the MOU with the county, it's not, it's not the state calculation of 3%.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, item B will be removed upon Board approval on Wednesday night, so we'll move on to C, any discussion on item C, under the regular agenda? Item D? Item, Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just didn't know if we had, um, you know, I know we passed the resolution regarding the kindergarten and pre-K portfolios, and I didn't know if we, has anyone heard anything? I know John is out of town and not here, um, from the Department of Ed on that?
Which item were you speaking to?
I'm s- on 12C about the evaluation of flexibility options, and if we have heard anything back from our resolution that we passed, anybody? Bueller?
Uh, Madam Chair, Ms. Roundtree, we did submit a request, a waiver request, we have not heard back yet from the Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item D? Item E? Item F? And item G? Ms. Round, Ms. Owen?
I, I just want to make sure that I understand exactly where this parcel is. Um, it's on the, on the opposite side of the road from Gresham, in an area that's not used for anything at all right now.
Mr. Oaks?
It's, uh, it's on the, if I can get my directions correct here, the south side, opposite side of the street from our campus. Uh, it, I believe at one time was part of the campus, and when that road was, was put in many years ago, it sort of left this little piece as an orphan over there. There's some apartment buildings built behind it, and they actually use it to access the apartment, the apartment building.
It, it looks to me like we wouldn't even have the potential to really use this for anything.
We have absolutely no use for it, no, ma'am.
Right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fugit?
Thank you. So, Mr. Oaks, when we surplus this, has anybody asked us to surplus this? Is there an intended use for it? Are we gonna lose the green space, or are we just surplusing it back to the county that then they'll either be responsible for it or sell it?
And I'll let Mr. Dillingham correct me if I'm, I'm wrong here, but we've, we've requested, or the, the, I believe the owners of those apartment buildings have requested some action on this, so it'll go back to the county, and then it'll be up to the county how they finally dispose of it.
If they're smart, they'll sell it to the apartment complex. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? That completes our regular agenda items for this evening. Ms. Roundtree, public forum is next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just forewarning, we have a long list of folks, and also if you are an out-of-district resident, per, let me find the line in our policy. Uh, per our policy, um, the Chair can recognize individuals who have not arranged to speak beforehand, oh, that's not the right line, where is the line?
While, while Terry's looking that up for you, Ms. Roundtree, uh, let me just say it's my understanding that, uh, Ms. Cottney.
Oh, here we go.
Okay, we should, um, told everyone when they called in that a majority of the Board would have to vote to affirm for, um, out of district, I mean, out of the Knox County people to be able to speak tonight, so in taking into consideration the large number of speakers that we have, we'll move forward.
Yes, I'm sorry, it is, it is in our policy, I just wanted to read it out into the record, so it's, B180 is our public forum policy, and it states recognition of individuals who are not Knox County residents is to be determined by a majority vote of the Board, so I just wanted folks to be aware of that.
Madam Chair, can we ask that, that we do all Knox County residents first? Or do we have, I mean, Mr. Bug, ask?
This Board can do whatever it wants.
All right, does that, do we need a motion or to do that?
If you want to make a motion, then five votes carries the day.
Okay, Ms. Round, Ms. Fugit?
I move that we start with all Knox County residents first, since they, since they are our, our citizens sitting here.
I second that.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Roundtree, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, so Ms. Roundtree?
Yes, I just voted to make my own job more challenging. Okay, so, please be patient, we're gonna get to everybody, we're just gonna, um, the Board voted for Knox County folks to go first, so that means our first speaker tonight is Barry Myers.
Barry Myers, President, Knox County Council, PTA, Knox County. Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Thomas, and all members of this Board for allowing me to speak this evening. I stand here this evening as a representative of Knox County Council, PTA, to submit a statement written and approved by the Knox County Council, PTA Board of Managers. Our position, we, the Knox County Council, PTA Board of Managers, stand here to publicly oppose the proposed changes by Knox County Schools Board of Education to Policy G220 and Policy J210, which address harassment of employees and students. We believe that the proposed change of replacing actual or perceived gender and sexual orientation by just the mere term sex in both policies limits both the legal and human rights of employees and even more importantly, students. Our argument, first, many children and even adults have been taught that it is a sign of weakness to ask for help, and frequently fail to tell anyone when they are being harassed for fear of appearing weak or even possibly losing their job. Harassment is a destructive issue that can create serious physical and mental harm in both children and adults. By removing these terms, the School Board is creating an environment in which staff and students do not feel protected and are fearful of being harassed. All of our teachers and students deserve to be protected by the Knox County Schools Board of Education and its policies. Secondly, we are currently living in a period when many individuals and groups believe that their human rights are in jeopardy. Many organizations and individuals view the term sex as only pertaining to male and female. Although the Board may have the understanding that the term sex would also imply actual or perceived gender and sexual orientation, this would not be the understanding to most individuals reviewing the policy. We as a community and as school districts should be doing everything possible to ensure our employees and students that are willing to, and students that we are willing to protect them at all cost. The proposed change in the language of these policies does not ensure that our employees and students' human rights are being protected. Thirdly, over the last four to five years, Knox County Schools has been working toward the goal of being the best schools in the South. We have made many advancements into achieving this goal, but we cannot be considered the best schools in the South if we are not also creating the best social environment for employees and students. The purpose of creating this goal is of course to provide the best possible education system for the students and employees who currently reside, who currently live in Knoxville area and attend Knox County Schools. But another part of this goal is to be appealing to future employees and families considering a move to our district. We can only achieve this goal if we are also creating the most appealing social environment. Why would we bow to the status quo of aligning our language with other organizations when we are striving to be the best schools in the South? Why wouldn't we want to be the example that other school districts would want to follow? In closing, the PTA's purpose is to advocate for the physical, mental, emotional, spiritual, and social well-being of all children. We, the Knox County Council, PTA Board of Managers, in alignment with the purpose of PTA, cannot support removing language from the current Knox County Schools harassment policy, G220 and J210, since this change would remove protections for employees and most importantly, the students of Knox County. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gregory Green. Gregory Green? I don't think Mr. Green is here, okay, so moving on to the next person in line, Persephone Webb?
My name is Persephone Webb, and I am a resident of Knox County. I'm speaking tonight as a representative of the Voices for Trans Youth Campaign. What values do we stand for as a community? Do we value a safe and supportive school environment for all students? Do we value a workplace environment free of discrimination and harassment for all employees? Do we value the life and worth of every community member? Are there words like "all" and "every" have asterisks attached to them excluding those who are LGBT? Do we as a community consider school safety to be a privilege reserved only for straight cisgender children? Do we find workplace discrimination against LGBT teachers to be acceptable? Do we believe that only straight cisgender people are worthy and deserving of respect and kindness? Our discrimination and harassment policies are a public statement of our community values. Some Board members have asserted that removing gender and sexual orientation from Knox County School harassment policies is not a moral issue. This is very much a moral issue. Our state government does not provide explicit written protections for LGBT people, and the federal government has recently taken the position that LGBT people are not protected by sex discrimination laws. This puts the LGBT population at risk. It is true that this Board is not legally required to provide protections beyond the state and federal minimums, but our local policies are up to us, to limit, or are up to us as a community. We choose what protections we provide based on what we value as a community. Removing existing written protections against discrimination and harassment on the basis of gender and sexual orientation signals that we as a community do not value the safety, well-being, and equal treatment of our LGBT, LGBT friends, neighbors, and children. But here's the thing, Knox County, the Knox County community does care about and value those among us who are LGBT. The public response to these policy proposals proves that. The public response to these policy proposals proves that. You have all been elected by this community, and it is your duty to uphold the values of this community in our schools. Something we say often in Tennessee is "all" means "all." Our motto as a school district is "Excellence for Every Child." As a community, we are committed to these credos. Voting to remove explicit written protections for LGBTQ students and teachers would put you at odds with the values of the Knox County community. Last month, Voices for Trans Youth submitted policy proposals to this Board that would strengthen KCS discrimination and harassment policies for LGBT students and employees, rather than eliminate them. However, at the September Policy Review Meeting, when you addressed Policies J-210 and G-220, you did not discuss our proposed amendments. We have revised and resubmitted our proposals to you. You should have... Each have a copy of those proposals in front of you right now. We request that you send J-210 and G-220 back to committee and consider our proposals at the next policy meeting. Thank you.
Speaker is Josh Smizer.
Good evening. My name is Josh Smizer, and I am also a Knox County resident. Today, I'm speaking to you as a representative of the Voices for Trans Youth Campaign, as a member of the Knox County community. And in addition, I'm the co-chair of Jobs of Justice of East Tennessee. Each of you should also have, in addition to those proposed changes, in front of you a copy of the "Save Schools for All" petition. This petition has garnered the signatures of over 450 Knox County teachers, students, parents, community members, and allies, all of whom oppose the removal of gender and sexual orientation from KCS harassment policies. So, tonight, we're asking that you take these printouts home with you, and you read all of the heartfelt, personal messages our community has left for you, and that you take these messages into consideration when deciding how you will vote on Wednesday. So, I'm now going to read a handful of the many comments, just so you have a taste of what folks are feeling. Quote, "As a KCS teacher, I am concerned at this change in language. Bullying against LGBT community is already frequent enough within our schools. We don't need to make the language that protects it more vague." Quote, "Having lost three students to suicide last year, the mental health and well-being of our students at Fairgood High School and in Knox County stands at the forefront of our thoughts and concerns. We must consider the detrimental effect that harassment and bullying can have on students' mental and social health. We must affirm protection of LGBTQ students and faculty against harassment in order to promote a safe and welcome learning space." Quote, "I come to school in order to get my education and become a productive member of society. I have also experienced so much discrimination due to my sexual orientation. I have been called things like queer, fag, and it, all because I love differently than others." Quote, "By removing these protections, you are signaling that you do not care about the actual safety of students in your own schools. As an LGBTQ resident of Knox County, I am utterly disappointed that the safety, dignity, and worth of these children is even a topic for debate." Quote, "As a student, I was on the receiving end of bullying because I was bisexual. The proposed changes will only lead to more bullying, harassment, and discrimination for LGBT plus students, teachers, and staff. The proposed changes would allow for abusers to claim that their actions are not harassment because the victims are not listed in the policy for protection." Quote, "The message I'm hearing from the school board is that I and other LGBT employees are no longer valued enough to protect them from discrimination." Quote, "LGBT students, and I would know because I was one, kill themselves because no one will lift a finger to help." Quote, "To remove these protections for gender and sexual orientation is to utterly betray Knox County students and teachers. The Knox County Board of Education should not be gutting protections and exposing their teachers and students to harm when they have more critical business to attend to. There are school pushout issues, issues with nutrition in schools, issues with school budgets being spent without Board approval. The teachers and students of Knox County deserve better protections, not less." Quote, "By removing anti-harassment protections of the LGBTQ community, this essentially tells students that it's okay to treat one group of people as less than another. It tells the LGBTQ community that their right to learn and to teach is not as valid." Quote, "I have a family member whose last two years of high school were a nightmare as a result of bullying in a Knox County school. Tons to the hallways and slurs and degrading graffiti about sexual orientation scrawled on lockers and restroom walls were a daily occurrence. Please do not imagine that harassment and bullying about gender and sexual orientation is not a serious problem for our schools. These students need and deserve our protection, including a written policy explicitly prohibiting these behaviors. I'm a clinical psychologist, and I've seen the devastating and lasting effect this sort of harassment has on students falling well into adulthood. I urge you to keep these protections in place to protect our students." Quote, "No one should have to attend school in fear because they could potentially be harassed by someone just because they are different. Homophobia and transphobia are already issues faced by so many students. Removing gender and sexual orientation from the list of protected classes would only make it so much easier for this to occur. Please, as a human being, do not allow the suffering of others." So, I want to appreciate that you all took the time to let me speak to you, and I, again, would just urge you all to consider all the comments that the 450 citizens of this county felt the need to share with you in this petition. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dean Rifkin.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to address the Board. My name is Dean Rifkin. I am a resident of Knox County. I'm a professor of law emeritus at the University of Tennessee College of Law, where I've been a faculty member since 1976. One of my concentrations is in education law. For decades, I've represented families and their children in education matters, many involving discrimination, harassment, and bullying. I urge the Board to leave the existing policy as is. And my remarks address the policy that is on the table still, but I think I first would like to address what I understand to be a well-intentioned suggestion to get rid of the protected categories that are included in this law. And I would recommend strongly against that. By doing it, by doing that, taking that approach, this Board would be defying the history of civil rights laws in this country. And this law is, in many ways, an anti-discrimination civil rights law. When Congress passed the Civil Rights Act of 1964, they didn't say, "Every person in the United States shall not be subject to discrimination." They could have done that, I guess, but it would have been ineffectual. It would have been ahistorical. There are classes of vulnerable individuals in this country who need explicit protection. Simply saying, "Everybody..." "Everybody is protected," doesn't give the kind of focus, the administrative attention to the groups that need it. And I would recommend against going down that path. I would recommend keeping this current law. And I want to address the legal aspects of this. The revocation that is proposed for actual or perceived gender and sexual orientation is not required by state or federal law, and, in my opinion, will exacerbate the potential liability of the Board for failing to protect students from harassment. I think these changes would likely cause more problems for the Board and more confusion than leaving this provision as is, as it has been on the books since 2012. I have several reasons for this. One is, there are no provisions in state or federal law that require or compel this change. It is not mandated. This is not the case. There is nothing in either state or federal law that undercuts this Board's independent authority to make policy for this school system. And indeed, Tennessee state law, in the Tennessee Teacher Code of Ethics, specifically protects students from unfair treatment by teachers, and the provision specifies sexual orientation as a protected category. The current J-210 does substantially the same and prudently clarifies for administrators, teachers, students, and parents that protection from harassment extends to vulnerable groups, such as those mentioned in this law. To remove these protections would also, I believe, compound the Board's liability in discrimination cases and would not relieve it. Using sex, for example, as a purportedly all-inclusive category brings the Board right into a complete disarray in federal discrimination law right now. The Attorney General of the United States, last week, revoked a longstanding policy that this Board seems to be relying on through the EEOC website. To do that is short-sighted. Courts around the country are divided on this issue, and, in my opinion, for this Board to step into that at this moment would be more liable. And finally, the current policy explicitly protects more vulnerable students. I'm sure the Board saw today's news sentinel talking about Knox County teen suicide data, screaming for attention. By removing these protections, this problem will only be exacerbated. I encourage you to leave the policy as is. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bailey Burrows.
Hi. My name is Bailey Burrows. I am one of the presidents of Bearden High School's Gay Straight Alliance, and although I'm here to represent all of the LGBT kids and students in our school system, I'm here specifically to read you a letter from the over 30 students and teachers who regularly attend RDSA meetings at school. So, a few of the things, of the many, many, unfortunately, things that we hear in our school system already is, "Who cares if a trans kid gets shoved in the halls? They're trying to man up anyways. Mr. so-and-so is gay. How did you even learn anything in that class?" And of course, the unmeasurable amount of slurs. I'm not even comfortable speaking in this room. Members of the Board, parents, teachers, here is the reality faced by the LGBT community. We are addressed not by our names, but by slurs because of how we were born. We are met by many, not by love and support, but by aggression when we are open about who we are. We are lambasted by threats of physical and even sexual violence when we dare speak out and fight for our rights. As much as you would like to pretend that this does not happen in our school system, and it does, it is deadly. Every day, like a poisonous, well-oiled machine, there are many of us in this community who fear doing simple things like going to the bathroom or expressing even the most mild, completely school-appropriate affection for their same-sex significant other because of fear of backlash and bigotry. Many of the students in our community live in homes that are not supportive of their identities. And school is one of the few places that offer environments of safety, love, and support by removing the specific protections listed in the policies that are up for debate. You are robbing us of one of the places that we should feel like we can be ourselves free of judgment. Removing the existing language and replacing it with the general and vague sex is a step back. You say that it's to align policy with state law, but so many other institutions fail to see that as an excuse to change their policies. The University of Tennessee, the Tennessee Valley Authority, and Alcoa, among others, have explicit protections that safeguard their employees from harassment on the basis of gender identity and sexual orientation. Why are we not afforded the same respect? Mayor O'Hara consulted with the Law Department and found that such explicit protections do not conflict with federal and state law. Why do we need to do away with something that doesn't need to change in the first place? The language of the word "sex" may be enough for you, but it does not protect a large proportion of us. Those who don't identify as their biological sex are left without protections. Those who suffer harassment on the basis of sexual orientation will be left vulnerable without legal language to protect them. The removal of words like "actual" or "perceived gender" or "sexual orientation" will rip immense loopholes that can be exploited. And despite the promise given to us by the Board that we will be protected, regardless of the legal language, we all want guarantee and peace of mind that those words would give us. The world is watching. The world is judging. Please make the right decision. Thank you for your time. The Bearden High School, GSA. As you can see, keeping the protections in the anti-harassment policy mean more to us than you could ever imagine. Changing the policy, whether or not this is your intent, and personally, I truly believe that it is not, makes it clear that the safety and the lives of LGBT students and staff are not seen as worth the amount of space that the few extra words would take up. I know, for me personally, as well as for so many others in my GSA and across our county, that LGBT kids and staff that you speak of, in such a detached way, are our closest friends, our favorite teachers, our siblings, and our parents. I'm lucky to have a supportive family that's here in this very room for me today. But for many of us, the only support system we have is at school, and it's the closest thing to family that we will have for a very long while. Even with my supportive family at home, I still see this GSA as my family too. Please keep my GSA family, including the wonderful teachers and staff, who do so much for us, safe. That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Michael Davis. Michael Davis.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael Davis. I'm a resident of Knox County. Despite the fact that I'm a lawyer, I'll try to be brief. I'm going to echo a lot of the things that Professor Rifkin just said. And I respect the Law Director's position, but I think this issue goes much farther. You would hope, you would hope, that discrimination wouldn't happen. So, why not clearly define it for everyone, whether you are a lawyer or not? This can be written to accomplish this, but leaving the harassment policy overly broad and too general puts more power in the hands of those who are already in power to interpret it and more out of the hands of those who are discriminated against. Under that stance, why not discard every enumerated protection under the Civil Rights Act? Race, religion, creed, national origin, sex, or age. Under current trending federal court interpretations, sex is an inclusive term that encompasses both sexual orientation and gender identity. There is significant case law to show this. The problem is, the current Department of Justice's stance is that sex is only defined biologically and is threatening this now widely accepted definition. So, the current definition can change. So, the threat posed is very real. It appears clear that dropping either sexual orientation or gender identity and only adding sex leaves the door open to the DOJ's narrowed definition. So, it's also clear that the most legally advisable thing to do would be to simply add the word "sex" and define it, specifically including sexual orientation and gender identity, thereby putting the issue to rest. This covers all the legal bases. If this is not done, then the question very quickly becomes, "Why not?" In addition to the concerns about following federal law, I've been informed that one concern is that if you leave current language in and then fire or discipline someone for harassing another on those grounds, that a fired employee or disciplined student will sue KCS for wrongful termination or other claims because those grounds aren't currently recognized as sex-based harassment, or alternatively, be that those grounds won't be recognized in the future. These are not well-founded concerns for at least five major reasons. Number one, federal law simply provides a floor to protections, not a ceiling. KCS is free to adopt higher-level protections, and if an employee violates them, KCS would be free to fire someone based on that standard. The same is true for disciplining students. Number two, the rest of the school board policy is well-written enough that if the Board found enough evidence of harassment, a court would only look at the reasonableness of that evidence and judgment, not the type of harassment. Number three, most federal courts, which also create federal law, already agree that sex includes sexual orientation and gender identity, thereby establishing this as grounds for termination or discipline for harassment based on sex. Also, if the DOJ interpretation somehow becomes the rule in the future, that's all the more reason to leave the language in. Number four, these policies aren't there to protect the school board. They're there to protect the students and the teachers. When you open the door to their harassment by writing them out of your policy, you also open the door to many more federal lawsuits costing tax... open the door to many more federal lawsuits costing taxpayers in legal fees, settlements, and fines. Number five, regardless of the DOJ’s stance, federal courts are going in a clear direction of concreting these protections. There is no changing this federal case law train, and Knox County will lose all of its lawsuits if the courts find that it is facilitating harassment by walking back its policy. What’s more, if the policy is changed to only protect against harassment based on sex, and some future definition of sex is intended to exclude certain classes of people, then the policy itself could be ruled discriminatory or unconstitutional on its face, opening the board up to even more liability. So, if fear of wrongful termination suit is not really an issue, then why let it stand in the way? If Knox County needs these protections, why not clearly guarantee them? If federal law already adopts the same language at issue today, why then would you not clearly state and define this language in your policies? If the only true increase in liability to KCS would only happen if the specific protections are stricken, why then would KCS invite this kind of trouble? If the language protecting both, sexual orientation and gender identity, is dropped, I’m afraid I know what answers Knox County’s teachers, parents, students, and other voters will conclude. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Keith Britt.
Hi. I don’t have any kids, but you are my representative, Mr. Gay. My wife and I are undergoing IBF treatment right now. We plan to have a kid pretty soon. We don’t know if we’re going to have a son, we don’t know if we’re going to have a daughter, we don’t know if they’re going to want to dance ballet, if they’re going to want to play football. We just don’t know. What we will know, if you change this language, is that you don’t have their back, that how they identify themselves is important enough to you that you want to exclude them. I just started a company. I’m about to finish my PhD. I’m going to start another company when I finish that PhD. I’m going to take all that tax revenue somewhere else if you change this language. We’ve seen this done before. I came from Raleigh, North Carolina. That economy, it literally started to implode around us because of something very similar to this. I see that you have three options. You can leave it the way it is now, and to me, that would signal courage. To me, that would say, you looked at the issue, you understood what it means to other people, you understand the signal that extends to the national and state media. And I think it is very well-intentioned. We can go with...
I got it. I’m not going to propose...
Yeah. We can go with that option, and I would... I don’t know. That would make me think about you. I think it may be a bit of a cop-out, that you are afraid to stand your ground.
I just said I’m not bringing it forward.
No, and I understand that, but there were other proposals that were supporting that. I want other members of the board to understand that. If you change this language as proposed, yeah, you’re sticking to your guns, but we know what you intend, what you’re signaling, and it’s going to have a devastating effect on this community. I firmly believe there’s going to be kids that kill themselves, and it’s going to be directly linked to you. So, I ask two things. Don’t change the language. Madam Chair, I spoke on the phone earlier with you today. You expressed to me you really don’t know what the impetus was to change this language. I would like to know what the impetus was to change this language. Mr. Brock, I believe you said it originated in your department. I would like to know what started this.
I am Christopher Dill in Knoxville, Tennessee. Where do we begin? For those who I’ve talked to in my role as an administrator, I’ve seen many times that gays, lesbians, bi, and trans people tend to be the ones who take the hit but always find a way to cope. On-call, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, they will cope because this is who they are. They may be suffering themselves in their home life or struggling in the days of exhaustion to get through the day because they want to feel accepted, so deep-seated in this belief with this coping that they find themselves asking for the help, whether in family systems or in the support put in place by you, the professionals. Frequently, they will attempt to survive it alone, falling into a deeper, darker depression as they feel more and more trapped in the life that they are living. As the world closes in on them, their self-esteem evaporates in a haze of loneliness and desperation. They retreat further and further from those who could help them. Many gays, lesbians, and people who don’t feel accepted turn to actions that will numb their pain because of forms of harassment, such as name-calling of fag, lesbian, queer, homo, dyke, freak, tranny. Yet it often goes unnoticed, and instead, they are rather perceived as having a nervous disposition. The suffering behind their anxious eyes goes unseen, and sadly for some, the need to take their own life, which seems to be the only way of ending their pain. Perhaps they didn’t believe they didn’t deserve the same support as others deserve. For those who tentatively find the courage to ask for help, the pill for every ill is most often wasted. They are treated to their own private hell, terrified to go out into the world to have them become a frightening world. Within the past week, I met a student who questioned me about the sexuality of an educator. They asked me, is that teacher gay? My response, does it matter? And if they are, does it change your feelings about them? They are no better or no worse than you are. I’m not here for myself, I’m here for all the people who asked me to use my voice to let their voices be heard. Going through school is tough enough, going through school worrying whether or not you will be bullied or ridiculed because of your sexual orientation or identity should not be at the forefront of one’s mentality, but sadly, it is. One in six students from the age of 10 to 24 contemplate suicide. The LGBT community youth are three times more likely to contemplate suicide. Further, if they feel neglected by their surroundings, they are eight times more likely to contemplate suicide. Each physical or verbal harassment victimization of an LGBT youth increased the likelihood of self-harming behavior by two and a half times on average. If a LGBT student commits self-harm due to not feeling protected while they’re in a Knox County school, which is supposed to be a safe place, your vote to change this policy and the consequences fall solely on your hands. The University of Tennessee and Pelosi Beach Community College, both for faculty and students, have sexual orientation and sexual identity expression in their harassment policy. So when you’re at your next UT football game, remember that those college football players and all those coaches and students in Neyland Stadium are protected against sexual orientation and sexual identity with expression, but if you vote to take these words out of our harassment policy for Knox County employees and students, the students and staff, and students who are under the age of 18, will not have protection, but those students out there on that college field would have protection. To stand in front of you, I want their voices to be heard. Is it normal to feel frustrated with life or feel angry and want to change a situation that is hurting? To accept to put the term “sex” as an overlying category is not a healthy option. By taking out these words in the policy, you are encouraging these students who feel unwanted to live in the shadows of others, and their mental health will surely follow. But if you keep these terms in a policy, maybe fewer people will find their lives as bleak. Taking away these words out of the policy and stating that it is to be aligned with state guidelines is a lie. Over half of the districts in the state of Tennessee school boards have sexual orientation and sexual identity in their harassment policies. How do I know this? I looked up every single district in this state. I hope your vote will enable you to understand the community and give the gay, bi, trans, and lesbian students and staff back their rightfully, mentally, and healthy school-life experience. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carl Whipple. Carl Whipple?
Carl Wheeler?
No. I got you, Mr. Wheeler. I think they were for the 403B. Okay, moving on to the next person on the list.
Hello. My name is Molly Shipman, and I am a teacher at Carter High School, and I come to you as a representative of the Equality Club. As a teacher, an advocate for LGBT students, and a lifelong recipient of Knox County public education, the removal of gender and sexual orientation in the harassment policy would have extremely close and personal implications in my professional life. I want to express to you that I love this school system for the way that it has nurtured me, protected me, and educated me over the course of two decades. However, I believe that this change of the harassment policy would greatly alter the incredibly inclusive environment of our school system in a very negative way. I would like to speak to the current struggles facing the LGBT student population at Carter High School. At the beginning of the school year, one of my students asked me to sponsor an Equality Club at the school. The student’s vision for the club was that it would be a place for any student that felt marginalized in comparison to the rest of the student body, or believed they did not fit in with the student population, could come and meet with others who felt the same way. The Equality Club was designed to provide a safe space for these students, wherein they could discuss the issues they were having and discuss how to make the school a more inclusive environment for all. While the club is open to all students, the students who have expressed the most interest have been members of the LGBT community. Two weeks ago, one student brought a gay pride flag to school with the intention of bringing it to the meeting. This flag was taken out before the school day began in front of a large population of individuals, creating an uproar among several members of the student body. While the issue of having the flag at school can be debated at a different time and place, the impact that this flag had on the student population is cause for concern. The presence of the flag stirred a debate among the student body about the visibility of LGBT students in the school. The backlash of hate speech, physical harassment, cyberbullying, and isolation towards the LGBT students in the school was truly horrifying. While the administration and staff worked as tirelessly as they could to respond to the harassment, the number of reports of hate speech were unsettling. Despite the fact that the majority of the student body expressed acceptance and tolerance toward LGBT students, the shouts of the select few who did not share this tolerance seemed much louder than the quiet acceptance of the majority of students. Every student, no matter what race, socioeconomic background, gender, or sexual orientation, has the right to feel safe within their educational institution. My students did not feel safe during this period of harassment, and that in itself is a testament to the necessity of the gender and sexual orientation-specific language in the county harassment policy. While tensions have cooled and the harassment has subsided, this prejudice and intolerance still remains deeply ingrained within specific members of the student body. The struggle is not over for my students, and I do not foresee it being over in the near future. The week ended peacefully, with no other signs of the former hate-speech-fueled agenda, and the Equality Club had a peaceful and successful meeting with no signs of disturbance or backlash. However, intolerance and hatred do not subappear overnight. They are only silenced for a time. The school staff commonly do so much to protect students and needs to be backed by strong county policy in order to keep students safe. I urge the board members to take a step back and think about the events that transpired at Carter this past week. Gender and sexual orientation harassment is very real, and I’ve seen the direct effect of this harassment on my students. Please consider what the removal of this language will do to students like mine, who already live in fear that their school is not always a safe place for them, due to the prejudices held by other students. Think about how these students must feel as they enter a building wherein they are supposed to obtain an education, only to be bullied and intimidated by peers. These students not only deserve the same opportunities as every other student in the building, but they deserve to be protected under county policy that ensures they cannot be harassed due to sexual orientation or gender. Please join me and countless other Knox County teachers as we work to fight intolerance and hatred within our schools. Help us send a message that these students will not be pushed out or ignored. Finally, please help my students feel safe when they come to school. Help them live their true selves. Help protect them. Thank you.
First of all, thank you. My dad was a school board member for 16 years, and I know it’s not easy, and I know the effort and the time that you all spend, so thank you for that. And thank you to Kendlin Koontz. What a remarkable resource she is. She’s fantastic. She came to West GSA to help us try to understand the policy changes that were going on and was a valuable source, which prompted me to think there’s a communication gap. Let me be clear, I do not think that the board is harboring any kind of malicious intent whatsoever. Never once has that crossed my mind. Through Kendly, I understood that the restatement is only to bring current policy in line with federal law. I do have reservations about that. It matters to me on two levels. The first level is I’m an educator, and I love every kid that comes through my room. The second, I’m an employee who identifies with the LGBTQ community. For 20 years, I worked in an environment where I had to hide who I am. I believe I’m a good teacher, but I don’t think that would have mattered if my secret had been revealed. And before, I was a teacher with a secret, I was a student with a secret. A student who wasn’t truly living, I was just existing. But now I’m at West High School, and I am so thankful for Ashley Jesse and the supportive staff for their inclusive attitudes for both employees and students throughout the school. And I tell you all this just because I wanted you to put a face to the group that this language protects. Last week, U.S. Attorney General Jeff Sessions stated that the prohibition on sex discrimination encompasses discrimination between men and women, but does not encompass discrimination based on gender identity, which includes transgender status. So if the reason behind the wording change is because the word “sex” is all-encompassing, it appears that this is not going to be the case going forward. Furthermore, the United States Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos stated that the Federal Department of Education is not going to be, quote, “issuing decrees on civil rights,” and of course, we should follow federal guidelines. But as another person so eloquently stated, federal guidelines give us floor-level protections, and that’s it, just the floor-level protections. Twenty other states have specific, inclusive language in their laws that protect LGBTQ students from harassment. Twenty-three other states have laws in place that prohibit workplace discrimination for LGBTQ employees. Our own mayor, Madeline Rehro, has protections in place for LGBTQ employees in the city of Knoxville. When I spent time at UT doing research for my doctorate, I did a lot of, which was on LGBTQ-related issues, I used Glisten’s school climate report quite a bit. So their 2015 school climate report, and it comes out every three years, 90% of LGBTQ students in Tennessee heard anti-LGBTQ remarks from teachers and students, 90%. Eighty-three% faced verbal harassment, and only 3% of Tennessee students attended school with comprehensive, inclusive, anti-bullying, and harassment policies. And I understand the equal protection clause, which is Amendment 14, is crucial to the protection of civil rights, and this is indicated on the student anti-harassment policy but not the employee policy. And if this is the intention, then as you stated before, let’s just take it all out and say, equal protection clause, you’re all protected. Title IX also isn’t mentioned in the employee policy. And furthermore, the Tennessee Code Annotated, the Teacher Code of Ethics, which is in Title 49, Chapter 5, Section 10, Treatment of Students, the words “sexual orientation” are in that policy. So if the Tennessee Code Annotated has the language, why can we not keep it in Knox County schools? And even Ms. Bounds, you’re my rep, and I know on your blog, you stated that children should walk away from the first week of school thinking this is the best and safest place in their world. I agree wholeheartedly with that, and that’s what I try to do in my classroom every day. And to this, I would add that teachers should know from the first day of school that they’re supportive for the professionals they are, regardless of who they love or what bathroom they use. So let’s keep in mind, the federal government will look different as early as next year when new members of Congress are elected, and policies... when new members of Congress are elected and policies will change. So let's keep Knox County forward-thinking and proactive and allow our kids to live honestly without fear of intimidation or harassment. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carl Wheeler. It really is you this time, Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you. My name is Carl Wheeler and I'm a resident of Knox County. But before I speak, I have some handouts I'd like to pass out to you all. Okay. I'm here for the second time to speak to you all with regard to policy J210. We made some recommendations and presented those to you at last month's meeting. I have since pulled down off the web the revised copy of J210, and it did some word-shuffling, to be quite honest with you. Two main issues I have with that, well actually, there's three. The first one has to do with line number seven, which refers to unreasonability of actions that happen to children when they are harassed. To be specific, I'll read it. It says, "Harassment is defined as conduct, advances, gestures, or words of a nature which unreasonably interferes with the student's work and/or educational opportunities." My question is, it was last time, was who's going to define "unreasonably"? If a student is being harassed and brings that to the appropriate authorities, who's going to make the decision that says, "No, Johnny, you're not being harassed. That's okay." Johnny doesn't see it that way. If Johnny's being harassed, whether they be physically touched, gestures, conduct, words, or whatever, if that comes to Johnny, Johnny's not looking for anything that's unreasonable. He has already, or she has already, been hurt mentally and perhaps physically. So that word "unreasonably" should be eliminated. You have the statement that says, "Harassment is defined as conduct, advances, gestures, or words of a nature which interfere with the student's work or educational opportunities." We don't need that word "unreasonably" in there. To me, that's a soft word that gives somebody approach or somebody a position to say, "Johnny, you're not hurt. Little Susie, nobody's harassing you. Little Johnny and little Susie are never going to feel that way if they have an issue." It affects them physically sometimes and mentally a lot of time. So I encourage you to delete that word on line seven, "unreasonably." The second item is line 19, which is talking about Title IX, Title VI, Section 504, and ADA. And it currently ends with "ADA." It goes on to say, "Confidentiality shall be maintained." I think and would like to see another sentence added immediately after "ADA coordinator." And that sentence would be like this. Teachers, administrators, and others who observe when a harassment is taking place shall take immediate action, the appropriate immediate action, and report the incident to the appropriate organizations, i.e. Title IX, Title VI, et cetera. Here again, it's up to the children to come forth. That's what this implies anyway, in my mind. But I would venture to say that there are a number of teachers and administrators and staff people who physically see and hear harassment of students. And these are thought people in authoritarian position. And if they see that, then they need to take action and report it and make sure the immediate action is taken and reported accordingly, as described. The last thing that I was going to say was, this J210, everybody knows is connected to G220, okay? All the individuals that came up here before and talked about this harassment and this name change and all, you know, this, and somebody said it quite nicely, this is supposed to be excellent education for all. That doesn't mean, there's no asterisk up there that says "except." It's educational, excellent educational for all. And I encourage you all to move these two documents back into committee and take another shot at it. Thank you very much.
Speaker is Todd Shelton. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Okay. So, next on our list is Paul Bowers. Is Paul here? Okay.
My name is Paul Bowers. I'm a teacher at West High School. Before I speak, I would like to ask the board if it would allow my friend and colleague, Samantha McElfrish, time to speak before me. She's not a Knox County resident, but she does teach for Knox County Schools.
The board voted for, to allow all the Knox County residents to speak before out-of-county residents, so we'll vote for each, when we get through all the Knox County folks, we're going to get to the out-of-county folks.
I understand.
And it is the board's policy that you can't yield your time to another.
I understand.
So you have your five minutes.
All right. I'll be very brief. I'm a teacher at West High School. I'm also a parent of a student attending Knox County Schools. This is my fifth year teaching for Knox County. In my time as a teacher, I personally witnessed harassment and bullying in the classroom and hallways of our schools. Every time this has happened, I've tried to address the issue with fairness, respect, and responsibility, while knowing I had the support and affirmation from my school district that bullying and harassment is not tolerated in any form or fashion, including those that relate to gender and sexual orientation. Making the proposed revisions to the board policy sends a message to those who don't think it's a big deal to bully others on the basis of gender and sexual orientation. Because of the lack of specificity in these changes, it allows an excuse to overlook these damaging behaviors. And as a teacher who, like every other teacher I know, cognizant of the disruption this type of harassment can cause, I'm disappointed that the board would allow this retraction of specific student support, even though I'm confident you all share my empathy on this issue. Many before me, and I'm sure after me, articulate the specifics of why these concerns are important. I merely wish to offer my voice of support as a supportive teacher, a mindful parent, and a concerned ally. Someone made a very important point earlier that itemizing classes for which harassment is not tolerated creates the perception that exclusion equals permission. This is the primary principle that concerns me, the message it sends to people who either passively or actively partake in this type of harassment. I hope the board will keep the specificity of sexual orientation classes and not remove the words "gender" or "sexual orientation." Thank you.
Speaker is Drew Freshour.
Hi. My name is Drew Freshour. I am a senior at Hardin Valley Academy and I'm also here as one of the co-chairs of Progressive Hawks at HVA. First of all, I'd like to say that I appreciate the board members' discussion about how to best prevent harassment, and I appreciate Ms. Roundtree and other school board members' emphasis on the fact that none of this is with the intent of encouraging harassment or discrimination. I go into this understanding that you are ultimately trying to do what is best for Knox County students and staff. My question with respect to the proposed amendments is why not maintain specific and direct language that protects LGBT Knox County students and employees? Why create a harassment policy that is unnecessarily vague and could potentially open legal loopholes that would benefit harassers? If the word "sex" needs to be added to the harassment policy that does not necessitate the removal of the words "actual" or "perceived gender" or "sexual orientation," the wording as it stands now is in line with city and county harassment policies and the policies of school boards across the state. As a school system, what do we have to lose by keeping language that explicitly protects LGBT students and employees? Why create unnecessary ambiguity in our harassment policy when it is, again, unnecessary? Thank you all for speaking. Thank you to all the speakers who have come up previously, and thank you to the school board for the opportunity to speak today.
Our next speaker is Letitia Flores.
Hi. My name is Letitia Flores. I'm a Knox County resident. I'm also a licensed psychologist and the East Tennessee Representative for the Tennessee Equality Project. So I am speaking on behalf of Esme Jones, who was a former Knox County parent but has since moved away. Her name is Esme Jones. Less than a year ago, three of her four sons attended Lake Pleasant Elementary. Though she now lives in another state, she very much enjoyed her time here and still keeps in touch with many families who have children currently enrolled in Knox County Schools. She wrote to share her experiences as both a suicide chat line counselor and as a master student in psychology at Harvard, in an effort to convince you of the importance of continued and explicit protection for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning children, commonly referred to as LGBTQ in your student policies. As a psychology student, she has examined the particular vulnerabilities present in LGBTQ children and the serious detrimental effects that bullying can cause. Social pressures are part of the school experience of many students regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, but the experience can be exceedingly difficult for LGBT students who are very vulnerable while coming to terms with their identity, and they frequently lack support from family and friends and encounter negative messaging about LGBT people at school and in their community. And I think we've heard of many instances of that tonight. As a result of these factors, LGBT students are more likely than heterosexual peers and cisgender peers to suffer abuse and bullying. Esme is also a trained volunteer counselor on an LGBTQ suicide prevention chat line. She writes that children log on afraid, upset, and suicidal every single day, and more often than not, bullying at school is a major factor contributing to these ideations. She's heard countless harrowing anecdotes of school bullying. Recently, one 12-year-old logged on and described how she was taunted, abused, and relentlessly degraded in the hallways of her school by having her private body parts grabbed, pushed, and being called tranny, weirdo, and faggot. She would often hide in the bathroom, crying and overwhelmed, making her late to class on a regular basis. She described how the harassment and dejection by her peers made her feel hopeless and worthless. Her school did very little to stop the harassment and told her to avoid the areas where the incidents often occurred, lightly admonishing those involved. After months of this, she had logged on in desperation with plans to hang herself later that evening. Incidents like these are not unusual. It has recently been shown that for every episode of LGBT victimization, such as physical or verbal harassment or abuse, this increases the likelihood of self-harming behavior by two and a half times. Also, LGBT youth are almost five times as likely to have attempted suicide compared to heterosexual youth and experience bullying at much higher rates. She and I, as a psychologist, have listened to these youth and we have seen firsthand the serious emotional and mental ramifications bullying can cause. These children are particularly vulnerable to bullying and deserve the extra protection given to them in school policies, and some of their lives actually depend on it. Thankfully though, research has also consistently shown that schools with strong policies for LGBTQ protection create safer learning environments, lower rates of victimization, create a greater sense of school belonging, and decrease depression, suicidal feelings, substance abuse, and unexcused school absences among LGBT students. The research is clear and the statistics are alarming. These children are particularly vulnerable. These children are increasingly victimized, and these children deserve explicit and specific anti-bullying protection. Esme and I, thank you for your time.
Those are all of our Knox County folks. Now we're going to get to our out-of-county folks. And the first person on that list is Brad Hope. Okay, so, not here, okay. So our next person is Samantha McElfrish.
A move, we let her speak.
We have a motion by Ms. Fugit that we let her speak. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Fugit, and thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me speak. I'm Samantha McElfrish and I'm a resident of Blount County. And I have a statement to read on behalf of the West High School GSA, where I'm a teacher. So last week, our group met to discuss the proposed changes to the harassment policy, and we were fortunate to be joined by the board's student representative, who is also a student at West. She explained the board's reasoning for the change. She listened to our request for an amendment that would include a footnote enumerating which groups are protected under the umbrella term of "sex," and she's taken that amendment request back to the board, where it's my understanding that it will be voted on. And we sincerely appreciate the student representative's attention to this issue. Thank you. We understand the board's intention is not malicious. It is to protect those potentially harassed because of sexual orientation or gender identity under this umbrella term of "sex." However, if the board intends to keep the list enumerating things like race, religion, disability, sex, et cetera, in the language of the policy, then we urge them to also approve this amendment that would clarify who is protected under the term "sex." Like the legal advisor stated earlier, if you start to itemize, then those things that are not itemized are implied as being excluded. So if your intention with the policy is to change, you know, to a blanket statement about not tolerating harassment, and that doesn't include any sort of list of any kind, then that's a different problem, I think. However, if the language of the policy would still include groups like religion or race by name, then we would urge you to, at the very least, accept the amendment that would explain who is protected under the term "sex" in the language of the policy. I think not to do so would be to exclude those who face harassment due to sexual orientation or gender presentation by not itemizing and therefore not humanizing us. Ultimately, we hope the board does not change the policy at all from its original state. If you do, though, then we would petition for you to also accept this amendment that makes it clear in the language what's intended. I think that would be a positive thing. We know that this policy's already gone back to committee multiple times, but if the goal is to truly protect everyone from harassment and to ensure excellence for every child, then it should return to committee as many times as needed until it truly leaves no room for discrimination. I really identify with what my coworker, Dr. Stacy Reese, said about being a student with a secret. Fortunately, I have not had to feel like an employee with a secret. Working at West High School, I have coworkers and administrators who are very supportive of who I am, and it's actually the first place where I felt comfortable being openly, "This is who I am," and I'm so grateful for that. I think it's ironic that I can obtain health insurance benefits for my same-sex partner, but here we are discussing what sort of language should be included in the harassment policy, who can and can't be harassed. And I just don't want any employee and especially any student to have to worry about being that person with a secret, and will the language of a policy protect me from harassment or not? So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephen Clements.
Do you want to vote? I'm from Jefferson County.
A move, we let him speak.
Ms. Fugit made a motion, seconded by Mr. Norman. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I'll be brief. I know it's been a long day. I want to commend everybody that's spoken so far, thinking they've given you a real taste of... taste of what the sentiment of the community is. I serve on the Jefferson County Democratic Party Executive Committee. Just in May, we dealt with this same issue. Our policy at that time was the standard anti-discrimination policy of race, sex, and religion. We examined what we considered the correct policy, and through, believe me, a very vigorous discussion on how to define our anti-discrimination policy, we in fact included gender and sexual orientation in our anti-discrimination policy. I think that you all have the best interests of students and faculty in your hearts. You have to know that the gay, lesbian, and transgender community in your schools are probably the most vulnerable to harassment and discrimination. And by changing this policy, I think that you have to understand that just by changing the policy to just "sex," which most people understand as being definition of male and female, then you would in fact be feeding the fires of discrimination yourselves. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Next item is board forum. Okay, Ms. Coates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues and teachers at West High School for the opportunity to speak to the GSA. Hopefully, we will continue to work through this issue, but I just want it to be clear that this board truly does have the best interests of the students in mind, and I trust that whatever the decision they make, we will work towards enforcing equal protection of everyone regardless of what it says. I know that all of my teachers at West and hopefully across the county will work towards protecting everyone, especially in enforcement regardless of the language. We understand it's unacceptable, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak to everyone, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Dethridge?
Yes, thank you. I just first wanted to say that congratulations to Austin East Robotics, who came in second place at the fair. They've been working for four years in the robotics, and they finally got a chance to win an award. Secondly, I want to say that the diabetes awareness video that was done at Vine, the kids had the opportunity to play flag football against UT football players, and that was very interesting, exciting, and we had a great time. So look forward to that. Video will be played at the Peach Bowl. So it will be a part of something that we can be proud of, and the Vine students beat UT by one point, eight to seven. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, one... Mr. Norman, Ms. Roundtree, Ms. Fugit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to give the board a quick update about the strategic planning process, because we talked about that in August and didn't want you to think I'd forgotten about it since I volunteered to help work with that. Talked to Dr. Davis. Just as a quick update to the community, the board felt at its August retreat that the world is moving so fast that a five-year strategic plan is too long. Most businesses and organizations are going to a three-year strategic plan, so this year, year four into our five-year strategic plan, we will begin a strategic planning process, probably with a shorter timeframe to make it a three-year strategic plan. So Dr. Davis and I are talking about who to gather in terms of planning. Susan Horn also expressed interest in helping us with that, and we will look to do something quickly. We don't want this to be a big laborious process, and also fully heard the board that I do think we will need at least two different kinds of strategic plan, a very detailed plan for the staff, and a very short executive summary that the community can understand what our strategic objectives are. So hopefully, we'll have some information to you next month as we move forward with some dates and focus groups.
Mr. McMillan. Okay, and I just need to say a shout-out to the Halls High School Boys Golf Team who took the state championship last week, so congratulations on that state championship. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. All in favor? Aye.